Good luck.
What's up?
Good luck.
Hello and welcome to the Lakeville City Council Candidate Forum brought to you by the Lakeville Chamber of Commerce. I'd like to welcome those in the room and those watching via livestream or through rebroadcast. The chamber is hosting three candidate forums this year, the Lakeville City Council, the Lakeville ISD 194 School Board, and a joint forum for Senate District 57 and House of Representatives Districts 57A and 57B. I'd like to thank the city of Lakeville for the use of the City Hall for all three candidate forums, as well as the live streaming and rebroadcasting of the recordings throughout this election season. I am Phil Rains with Prevailing Wisdom LLC, and I'm the Chair of the Lakeville Chamber Access and Issues Committee. I will serve as tonight's moderator. The timekeeper for tonight's forum will be Colleen LeBeau of LeBeau &amp; Associates, Remax Advantage Plus, and she is also a member of the Lakeville Chamber Access and Issues Committee. It is the mission of the Lakeville Chamber of Commerce to serve as the advocate, resource, and leaders for our members and the business community. As such, we conduct these forums each election season, so you may get to know the candidates who would like to represent and serve our businesses and our residents. We invited all five City Council candidates to come to this forum. We're glad that everyone chose to show up today and appreciate your attendance. Candidates in attendance who have been seated by random draw from my left are Joshua Lee, Abdi Abdullah, Sham, Richard Henderson, and Michelle Volk. Glad to have you. Thank you for running. This really is a difficult thing to do for people, I know, and I appreciate everyone who puts their name in the ring and hopes to help our community. The format for this forum will be as follows. Candidates were sent a list of potential questions in advance. We will random draw the questions, asking as many as we have time for, with the understanding that I, as moderator, have the discretion to ask one additional question if I so choose. To our live audience in attendance, thank you all for being here. We will not be taking any live audience questions today, so we do encourage you to reach out to the candidates individually if we don't address topics for which you would like more information, and that goes for our online audience as well. We do also ask that our in-person audience at City Hall please respect each of our candidates and our streaming viewers by refraining from noises and remarks that will disrupt the format and detract from the ability to meet with each of the candidates. Each candidate will receive two minutes for introductions and opening remarks, two minutes to respond to each question, and 90 seconds for closing remarks. With 30 seconds remaining in each candidate's allotted response time, timekeeper will hold up a yellow card, and when time has expired, they will hold up a red card. If you continue past your allotted time, I will ask you to finish your statement. With each new question, we will start with the next clockwise candidate. Each question will be directed to all candidates. This is a forum, not a debate. We do recommend that you use your allotted time to respond to the questions as they relate to you and your candidacy, not to comment or respond to other candidates' answers. We also ask that you respect each candidate and their allotted time, and do not make comments during or directly following their answer, period. This forum is intended to get to know each of you and why you wish to serve our community. Are there any questions? Fantastic. Let's get started. Each candidate will have two minutes for their opening remarks. Again, we're going to start left to right, and then with each question, we'll move the starting person one down. So that brings us to Mr. Lee. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Good evening, and thank you all for being here. My name is Joshua Lee, and I am running for reelection on the Lakeville City Council. In 2014, my family moved to Lakeville for several reasons. It was highly rated for K-12 education, for its safety, for its highly rated amenities, and offered affordable housing options that were conveniently located between my workplace at St. Olaf College and my wife's workplace at Hamlin University. In the time since then, that initial move, I've developed a strong sense of pride and responsibility for this community. That journey started when I joined the Lakeville Police Reserves in 2014 and continued to become stronger as I became more connected through the Crossroads Church, Lakeville Rotary, Lakeville Chamber of Commerce, and of course, my time on the City Council. Lakeville is not only a place that I moved to now, it is a place that I call my home. After serving in this role through some of the most challenging years in recent history, I can tell you that this position is not easy or glamorous, but it's an important and rewarding work. As a city, we have successfully navigated through uncharted territory, supporting our community through a pandemic while simultaneously leading our region in growth, achieving a AAA bond rating, and maintaining the lowest taxes in the county. We also haven't shied away from tough conversations and concerns that impact the most vulnerable populations and resources. So when I'm asked why I'm running for reelection, it's because I believe in the work that is being done, and I've proudly been a part of initiatives that are vital to the growing community and that continue to make Lakeville the best place to live, work, and play. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Abdi.
Thank you. Welcome, and my name is Abdi Abdullah. I am running for City Council. This is my first time running for City Council in the city of Lakeville. A little bit about myself, I grew up in South Minneapolis, graduated Minneapolis Public Schools, went to University of Minnesota, and attended University of River Falls and provisional studies. I graduated from Hamlin in Master of Public Administration, as well as my principal license. I am the Executive Director of a small and private organization in southwestern Minneapolis since 2018. I'm still current that administrator. I moved to Lakeville after Georgie Floyd got killed. I have been witness that traumatized me, and I moved out of that city, and I moved to Lakeville, and I believe, city of Lakeville, I felt a sense of belonging and home. I call Minneapolis home still, where I spent 20 years, but now me and my wife, we're sitting with an audience tonight, Shogri Abbi and I, and our six children, the age of 14 to four, are now a part of this beautiful community. I moved here for many different reasons, as safety, issue of school system, all those are part of the reason that I moved in Lakeville. I envision a community that have a sense of belonging to each other. We polarize the community here, but I believe Lakeville have a different vision, and that is why I'm running, to bring that common interest together as a families. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Sham.
Thanks, Chamber of Commerce, to host this event tonight. My name is Sham Shaabane Abdul Kalik. People knows me by Sham. I was born in Cairo, Egypt, 1963. I have three brothers and one sister. My father, my mother passed away 25 years ago, so I carried the whole responsibility to grow my brother and my sister, because I was the first son. Since I was young, I was working hard to raise my family good. So I come to United States of America in 1990. I lived in New York for eight years and met my wife Agatha. We moved to Minnesota to Lakeville here in the year 2000. I helped my friend Salah, the owner of the Backboard Restaurant. Since then, I work with him, and I went through some tough times. In 2016, I got hit by cancer. I lost my right kidney. I stayed home like one year. It was a tough time, but I follow up with the doctors. So far, I'm cancer-free. So thank God. When coronavirus hit our country about two and a half years ago, Governor Wallace shut down all businesses, especially the small businesses like restaurants, bars, everything shut down. So after like six weeks, he opened it, but he got a tick out only. So everybody filed employment except me. So I'm the one, I was open the restaurant, taking orders. I cook it, I give it to the people, and most of the customer when take it out, he says, "Man, one kidney and cancerous fever, and you do all this?" I say, "Yes", because I love my town and I like to serve the people, and they always says, "You are a hero." Thank you.
All right, thank you. Richard.
Good evening. Thank you all for attending. My name is Richard Henderson. I'm running for City Council. I am a small business owner, podcast host, Navy veteran, and father of five children. I am independent, nonpartisan, and I try to be nonpolarizing. I am a political outsider, not funded by any special interests. There is more truth than sarcasm in the saying that Lakeville is America's biggest small town. A lot of powerful special interests do influence our city, but you can always be assured that I will always make decisions based on what I believe are the best interests of Lakeville and not a special interest. I believe I can add unique value to the City Council. My background as a now-retired U.S. Navy captain brings command leadership skills, running complex and complicated organizations, skills that will translate well to city leadership. I have lived the military leader's code of authority, responsibility, accountability. My engineering background will also add value as we tackle what I believe is Lakeville's biggest challenge, our high rate of growth. Having raised five children here with my wife Stacy in Lakeville, I also understand the challenges that families face. I serve in Rotary and Veterans of Foreign War and a member of the Chamber of Commerce and All Saints Paris. Briefly, my three priorities are sustained and balanced growth, keeping Lakeville family-friendly and public safety. I am concerned about the polarization that is gridlocking national and state governments and has even turned our local school board into partisan trench warfare. I'll work to keep Lakeville government-friendly and nonpartisan. One strives to find something good in a viewpoint they disagree with, just like we did in the military. My number-one job will be always to listen to you and hopefully be your independent voice. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Michelle.
Good evening. I am always proud to tell people that I'm from Lakeville, Minnesota. My parents moved here 49 years ago. I grew up in the Valley Park area, and I graduated from Rosemont High School. I met my husband, Tom, and we've been married now for forever, 41 years, and we have three daughters that we raised here in Lakeville, and we are now proud grandparents of three granddaughters. I currently work from home, and I do bookkeeping for multiple businesses. One of the great things about our community is the opportunities that we have to volunteer, and I have done that through the schools, basically. As my children are going through the schools, I volunteered at all of them. I've been a past PTO president of a couple of the schools, and thankfully, they still allow me into the schools to volunteer as a grandparent for my granddaughter, who's at JFK. We are really fortunate that we have such a strong business community, and we shouldn't take them for granted. They really care about our community, and they provide the necessary partnerships that we need for the school district and also the city. As a longtime resident, I've experienced the immense growth that we have had in our city, and nowadays, as I travel across the country, the interesting part is that when I first would tell people 40-something years ago that, you know, Lakeville, Minnesota, they had no clue where we were. Now, when I travel and I say, "I'm from Lakeville, Minnesota," it doesn't matter what state I'm in, they know who we are, and we have such a great reputation, and I will continue to work on behalf of our citizens to retain that great distinction. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate, again, all of you being here. And a reminder, you'll have two minutes to respond to each question as they come through. We're going to start off with Abdi when we get this question. This question relates to workforce. All right. As our business community continues to grow, we need to continue to develop and support strategies to recruit and retain qualified candidates for the independence positions that are being created. Excuse me. How will you work to ensure that Lakeville has the services and amenities that will attract the workforce to fill the jobs that are being created here? All right.
All right, thank you. So the issue of workforce is something that we have been experiencing lately. As I told, I am Executive Director of a small school, and we experience the same problem that this question raised. And if you go, I'm educator, so around the school districts now, we have a shortage. Police, any workforce you tab it, it is a shortage. So in Lakeville, it is not different, the problem that existed in the state of Minnesota and at large in our nation, and that is a problem that we share with other people. In Lakeville, how can we address this question, and how can we create those? We can create a proactive and intervention program that we can put in place, which means providing incentives, creating scholarships, trying to, you know, scholarship for even graduate and professional studies. Those are the ideas that we need to discuss, not only in the chamber, but at large in the Lakeville community and residents, because who will pay at the end of the day, and who those money will be sponsoring is by the resident taxes. Those are the questions. It's a hard question. It is a very hard question, and it's a problem to address, and we have to touch that. And as an administrator, I believe I know what it looks like to be balanced, the budget. I know how to create the budget. I know the question that we need to be asked, and those are the things that probably will have come up with the question, the question we've come up with. The issue is not us. It is all within the nation and the state and the local government, but creating those kind of discussions and having that hard question right now will probably solve the longer-term problems. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
I think we have this problem for the short of the workforce more than 15 years now. We discuss this issue so many times. The exit is to build cheap houses for people to come to report to live in or to buy, because the houses here is very expensive now, you know. You need 40% from your income to buy a house. That's what banks is. Same thing if you want a rent apartment, your income has to be one-third the rent. So if you're going against somebody working here for average $18 an hour, 40 hours a week, it's like $2,280. If you divide this by three, it's going to come to $960. One bedroom apartment rent $1,300 now, average in Lakeville. Forget about the two bedrooms. So the owner or the manager of the buildings is going to ask him for base stops. When he bring the base stops, it's not going to qualify, because he make only $960, one-third of the rent. So it's not going to qualify. How am I going to attract people? So we have two options. First option, to forget about the base stops, so people can rent apartment, they don't bear the rent, they rest court. The second option is the property taxes so expensive now. Property tax for last 15 years, from $300 for apartment to $900 for apartment, and this is killing the housing or people to come live here to rent apartment and stuff like that. What I'm saying is, we got to work out these things to send the City Council, current or the incumbent, to send a motion to the managers of buildings, rentals, to stop asking people for base stop. That's why people come from outside, they come rent apartment, you don't bear the rent, you got to rest court, and this is a fee, a lot of things. Thanks.
All right, appreciate your answer. Richard.
Thank you. Lakeville's workforce will likely surpass 20,000 in 2023. Over 25% of the city's resident population. Developing a community that will attract and retain workers is as important as keeping Lakeville the community of choice for South Metro home buyers. This issue highlights the strategic element of planning and development. Services and amenities such as dining establishments close to employment centers like Air Lake requires a strategic focus on planning and redevelopment. There's been some good progress, such as the new Amoco station that we had, a ribbon company for today, and the airport restaurant, and more should be prioritized. Beyond dining, workers need access to a broad range of services so that Lakeville is not just a place they communicate or commute into each and every day. We can prioritize more of these services in our new developments, including the professional services that workers need access to during the workday. This might require, you know, being flexible on small amounts of rezoning in development. Perhaps the best way to attract qualified workers is for Lakeville to be a place where more of these workers can afford to live in. This requires strategic planning and development for more workforce-oriented housing closer to centers of employment and to increase diversity of housing with more affordable apartments and townhomes close to employment centers, and that might include senior housing for seniors who want to stay in the workforce. And for these workers who live in Lakeville, amenities such as improved bike trails and pathways offer attractive alternatives to traditional automotive commuting, so green development can actually be pro-development in making Lakeville more attractive to the folks who work here each day. Thank you.
All right, I appreciate that. Michelle.
Thank you. So I was trying to think of all the amenities that we have here in Lakeville, and one of the greatest resources that we have is the Chamber's Lakeville Works Program. This program has really helped to connect our youth and people and our citizens with potential jobs here in Lakeville. And the other thing that they've highlighted is the fact that you don't need a four-year degree to actually get a fantastic-paying job in this city. We have plenty of them in the Air Lake Park that maybe even with a couple of years of schooling, and/or the company may actually train you. They are pretty desperate for employees in a well-paying job. It would also be wonderful if we could get a college like Dunwoody to actually come and offer some satellite classes here in Lakeville. And I'm not really sure at this time, you know, what that would take to get them to come here to offer those classes, but I'm definitely willing to spend the time to pursue that idea. Our current amenities is that we have like over 90 restaurants. The City Council has updated their policy on food trucks, so businesses could have food trucks come to their company. We have lots of green space, parks, trails for employees to take walks during their lunch breaks, the wonderful Air Lake Airport that was brought up, and I believe that our city is a great place to raise a family with all the activities that we have in the Park and Recs Department, the Art Center's a wonderful venue, and all of these things, including beautiful neighborhoods, are ways to attract people to come and live and work in Lakeville.
All right, thank you for your answer. Appreciate that. Joshua.
So the labor issues, to me, are an evolving and multifaceted issue. Ultimately, what it comes down to right now is the fact that our labor pool is so small, and the skills that they have are mismatched for the opportunities that we have within the city of Lakeville, and really any region around the country. So while there are many ways to address this, I think the primary issue is educating and creating those career opportunities in ways that maybe our high school students are not thinking about right now. And one of the best sustainable ways to do that is investing in our youth who are ready to work and are ready to learn the skills they need to make a meaningful and profitable life after graduation. As an administrator at St. Olaf College, I clearly am one that is an advocate for a four-year education and have been one to really push opportunities that revolve around mentorships, apprenticeships, internships. But I have also had several conversations with college students that a four-year degree is not always the right path, and I think that that is true for our high school students, and they need to realize and understand all of the opportunities that are out there. And if we can help train our youth to match the skilled trades that we have in Lakeville, that is a very sustainable and healthy way to not only support our businesses, but to support our community and hopefully keep that talent here, because honestly, if we can do that, that is a very holistic and sustainable way to just help our residents, businesses, and the whole ecosystem that we have. So just one, obviously there are many more, but that's the first one that came to mind.
Okay, thank you for your answer. Appreciate that. All right, we'll move to the next question, which we'll start with Sham. This is a question about Envision Lakeville. Envision Lakeville was created to serve as a roadmap for the future of the city. How have the community values and strategic priorities of Envision Lakeville been carried out, and what still needs to be addressed? Sham.
Five or 10 years from now, we all heard about climate change. Climate change, the rain, the clouds come back to us with acid rain now, and it's keeping growing, because the poisons and all the factors were sent to the cloud and come back to us as acid rain. I think five, 10 years from now, the lake, you can't swim in the lake no more. So my proposal is for, one of my objects, we have a great spaces in our parks. So my proposal is, I see in September 19, on a City Council meeting, there was discussed about a truck, vending truck, beverages and little food in the parks, and I see, I agree with Joshua and Michelle to oppose this situation, because there is a bigger issue we can discuss there. So if you want to go, we're going to go big. We have a lot of spaces. All we need, one of my steps, to build a fine investor or the city fine investor to build swimming ball. Swimming ball and one in the parks is going to bring us a lot of joy and fun for families and kids, and so also cafeteria with light meals and beverages. And we all discuss this later on, but the idea is to bring something new and bring revenue to the city. The city takes 6% for the food truck or beverage. No, it take a 50% from the investor, and this is a lot of income. We're becoming like the liquor store, bring a lot of income to the city. So this is the same thing, we bring a lot of income to the city. That's one of my proposal. Thank you.
All right, I appreciate that. Richard.
I believe Envision Lakeville has been an effective tool to bring folks together to share opinions and ideas about what they strategically envisioned for Lakeville. Let's view some of the different sections of Envision Lakeville. First, we made good progress on increasing economic sustainability. This includes This includes improved diversity in larger and smaller commercial businesses. As Lakeville moves aggressively through its 2040 land use plan, we should open up the aperture more to the next phase of development coming after 2028. Next, our excellent schools continue to be perhaps the biggest driver that brings in new families. I would perhaps look at ways to improve upon the Chamber of Commerce's Lakeville Works initiative to partner schools with the local workforce. The next element of Envision Lakeville to develop a community of choice is moving in the right direction. The recently passed Park Bond will improve our parks and raises everybody's property values and Lakeville's quality reputation. The city government, I also think, is also delivering its services in a highly competent manner. The more challenging part of Envision Lakeville is cultivating a sense of community. Lakeville's large footprint and increasing diversity, diversity that is concentrated in our newer neighborhoods are challenges. We've created a good starting point to have the conversation and I support doing more to build on this inclusion. This year's task force has been a good, to improve sense of belonging has been good, action steps move in the right direction. But there are not a lot of specifics, more general guidelines and collaborations. We should implement more measurable steps into 2023 Envision Lakeville updates. In the future, one item I will be sensitive to is that efforts to cultivate a sense of community start to become what the military we called Kabuki Theater, where going through the motions and the process became the focus. Cultivating a sense of community is a journey, not a destination, and it requires the ongoing community focus and a leader's commitment to inclusion. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Michelle?
Well, one of the community values that I would like to focus on in the next four years is access to a multitude of natural amenities and recreational opportunities. We're very fortunate in this city to have 125 miles of pedestrian and bike trails and 1,700 acres of beautiful parks. Our newest neighborhood park includes a we-go-round and that is for children that have, are in wheelchairs. And so that they have the opportunity, we, I should say, have the opportunity now to enhance our additional parks that we've got coming up with inclusive playground equipment. I recently saw an article online describing the University of Pittsburgh and the new design that they had for waterproof motorized wheelchair that runs entirely on compressed air. This chair was designed for a splash park in Morgan's Wonderland Park in San Antonio, Texas. And by the way, Morgan's Wonderland Park claims that they are the first park where everyone can play. In order to accomplish this goal of enhancing our parks with inclusive playground equipment, partnerships will need to play a vital role. Currently, our partnerships with the Lakeville Hockey Association and Heritage Figure Skating Clubs, they have committed 1.5 million to the outdoor multi-use pavilion at Haze Arena. Our business community is the one that contributed toward the we-go-round in that neighborhood park. The Lakeville Lions are donating $500,000 to the new splash pad at Avonlea Community Park. We need to continue to find opportunities to partnership with organizations and other government entities that will benefit our community. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Appreciate that. Joshua?
So I've been a part of many strategic planning and visioning processes throughout my career. And one of the most frustrating parts of these processes is when the end result results in no change, no action, and gets placed on the shelf. What I appreciate about Lakeville and the Envision Lakeville document is that it's an initiative that's a living document that's embedded in the day-to-day operations of our city, of our planning and decision-making. And you can see how these strategies have evolved over time through multiple committees and community input. It's something that the whole community has been a part of and is one of the reasons why I think it's been successful. You can actually go to the city website right now to see our progress on all of these initiatives. However, my belief is that this work is never really complete because we are consistently reevaluating and determining what our next step should be. It's an annual process that continues to grow and evolve. The cultivate a sense of community value has been a recent focal point for our community and spawned several initiatives. And as one of the primary authors for the task force and the subsequent actions that came after that, I believe that this is an extremely important piece of the future of Lakeville. Each aspect of this process has been an opportunity to learn, but it has also been an exercise in humility. So as a result of this work, we've initiated a new youth advisory commission and have created more measurable strategies for fostering a sense of community. So while there's more work to be done, I believe we've laid the foundation for more work that supports community involvement in addressing community concerns.
All right, thank you. Appreciate that. Abdi?
Good. All right, thank you. Envision Lakeville, it was not something that I was aware of until I was receive a phone call from a reporter from, I think, Star Tribune or NPR. I don't remember. And they asking me about, you live in Lakeville, you know, how did the city treat you? And I was like, what? What are you talking about? So the plan, the vision, what we wrote in it, the cohort group that we put together, all these will ended up, as Joshua say, in the cabinet. But the difference is that we're looking for is implementation and executing that implementation. So that is what really the ultimate goal, that is it. So setting up a goal that's measurable and attainable for the city is what we need to get out of this Envision Lakeville. How do we get that is the question and how do we create that is the question we need to ask ourselves. It's not a question that the chamber can be answered, it's the question that whole entire city of Lakeville resident and taxpayers need to be a part of it and collaboration and consultation with stakeholders, business members, other community members. So it is a very challenge that's ahead, that we need to be ready for it today in a city perspective, budgeting and money and how we paid things that the beautiful idea that we propose. How are we going to challenge the crisis that will come out, the new diversity population in the community that joined Lakeville City? That is now called itself a very welcoming city. And that we see, those are the question that need to be, find an answer for it. Do I have the answers and best plan? Of course I do. It costs you money. So those are the things that we need to ask ourselves. So I believe collaboration between the community and the city officials, stakeholders, the county, we need to come together and plan better for our city. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, appreciate everyone's answers today. We're going to move on to the next one and we will start on this one with Richard. That one seems like the perfect one. This is about city services. Lakeville continues to be the fastest growing city in Minnesota and the demand for services is constantly increasing. How would you balance the increased need for services while also ensuring that our city remains fiscally responsible? Richard?
With Lakeville tracking to be the fifth largest city in Minnesota, demand for services are going, only going to go up. First, people and business expansions in our cities will require proportional increases in staffing and services. You can only rely so much on improved economies of scale. The Envision Lakeville process also notes superiority of city services as important contributors to our high-quality city. I will cautiously consider outsourcing to the private sector to accommodate an increase in workloads when it is not feasible or cost-effective to hire city staff. This is often done, for example, with infrastructure projects. But whether hiring new staff or using private sector outsourcing, the bottom line is we should be willing to make the spending investments to ensure there are no decline in quality of government services or quality of life. To not make these investments over time will reduce everyone's property values and the value attached to Lakeville. And these declines in property could be to benefit negligible savings in these expenses. You know, this would be a good time to define my values when revealing increases in government spending. I apply a nonpartisan business case process that I learned in business school, such as a cost-benefit analysis. I determine what additional costs are required for a community investment and then make an estimate on the increase in property values and revenue that would result from that investment. If this clearly, if this increase clearly exceeds the cost, then I will move forward favorably with a further review on this spending or investment. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Appreciate that. Michelle?
Thank you. Well, this is always a challenge. By ensuring that we're providing the necessary core services such as police, fire, the streets, the trail maintenance, along with our need to actually replace and or purchase expensive equipment and then balancing the cost to the taxpayer in the best way we can. One of the things that I wanted to mention is that we are extremely fortunate that we have department heads in this city that don't have the mentality of use it or lose it. Their budgets do not roll over year after year. And so they consciously look at their budget and determine whether or not what they had budgeted for that year is actually a necessary expense and can it be held off? Consistently, we have seen them come in under budget year after year, which I have to say is very commendable. There's just not a lot of government agencies that do that. They are great fiscal stewards of our money. Sometimes as council members, we have to make some tough decisions and that is maybe not to actually purchase something or move a project to the next year as we're trying to look at that balance of what it's going to cost to our taxpayer. We also need to reach out and seek more grants. For instance, the city council is looking at seeking a grant to be able to hire six firefighters. At the end of the year, if we have general fund money left over, our policy is that 50% of the budget has to be available for the next year. Then we can make some one-time purchases. In my opinion, the city council has been a very good steward of our taxpayers' dollars. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Appreciate your response. Joshua?
Well, there are several ways to balance the needs of services and the demands there and meet our fiscal responsibility needs. First, we need to continue to make progress on our financial sustainability policy and our pay-as-we-go strategy. Because at some point, our growth will slow down and it will be necessary that we have the funding structures available to support a community that's not growing as rapidly as we are today. Second, we need to continue to seek out the grants and resources that are available at the federal, state, and county level. For example, the county has a program for trailheads that they will help develop and maintain. And there are opportunities for us to continue that partnership so that they take over those financial responsibilities for those trails. Third, continually seek efficiencies in our resources, tools, and equipment. Four, focus on maintaining that AAA bond rating. We achieved it. We know what it takes to continue to maintain that. And it's important that we do because that brings down our interest rate on any bonding that we do here on out. And fifth, ensure strong communication and input from our Economic Development Committee and Finance Committee to help us, help guide us forward because we need their expert voices as we continue to move into the next chapter of Lakeville. So while this is not an exhaustive list, it demonstrates the multiple facets that it requires and the levers that are available to keep our city financially healthy.
All right, thank you. Abdi?
Hey, I believe there's only one way to balance the balance sheet, which is to be responsible. And that is what I have seen the city was missing last two years when I according to the finance budget, the budget that was in 2022, 2021, the city is spending more money than revenue that's coming to end. So how, it is a, it is very simple logic. How are you going to spend the more money than you have? You either have what you have in the book and spending that to the limit or you look for another revenues, whether you're going to bring from city investments or grants, whether the federal, the state level partnerships, find a ways to pay for it. And whatever you budgeted on that budget sheet, that's what the city needs to be, go under it. Going back to the question of how do we do this? We need to be transparent with the community that we serve in, resident and taxpayers. Do we have, you know, what it takes to bring that onto the table? That's the question that needs to be answered. Are we planning, are we planning accordingly? Are we paying accordingly? Who is our, you know, who are we paying the biggest debt? Of course, we need to pay the police, we need to pay the city and city workers, we need to work with the fire. We need, there is, you know, there's an area that we have to address immediately that we have to pay that payroll needs to go out. But we need to answer the question of, which is very simple, how are we going to generate more funding? If we're not raising taxes or making any levies and we're spending more money, where will the city future go? That's the question needs to be answered. And I don't have the question answers by myself, but it's among us. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Sham?
Physical possibility is a relationship between spending and our income in the city. So so many times I says, you cannot spend money you don't have. I see the dip yesterday and here in the chamber. Mayor Doug Anderson, who is worried about the five years project coming, was engineer Zach was here the other day to borrow like $10 million. And five years from now, this $10 million is going to go up because everything coming expensive, expensive. It's going to go up to 15,000, to $15 million maybe. So we cannot spend money we don't have. Like I says, we're going to prioritize the need for the wants. So many time I says. And also we have no investment. The city didn't invest in anything. Only investment we have is the liquor stores. Like I says, if the city invests in a swimming ball in the parks, if I have a thousand membership in each swimming ball, for a hundred dollar membership, this is a hundred dollar, this is a hundred thousand dollars a month for a whole year. This is going to be four seasons swimming ball. For the whole year, it's going to be a million dollars. Exactly income only to enter the swimming ball, to only to enter the swimming ball, this is only fee. Plus you can have a cafeteria, food, beverages. If you're going to find investor to do it, yeah, you're going to have charging 50% income to the city. So there's many projects. You can attract money to the city. We're keeping spending money, spending money, like 90% from money invested in infrastructure, road and stuff, it doesn't come back, never come back. So we need to spend money and bring revenue to us again, so we could use it again, again, and again. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, so we're on to the fourth question. This one, we start with Michelle. All right, and this one is about connections. Given that the chamber is a business organization, tell us specifically about your connection to the local business community. Michelle?
Thank you. So I've been a chamber member for over 20 years and I have been participating in the Access and Issues group meetings. These meetings, a lot of times highlight a speaker and they discuss issues that affect our local business community. Members that are on that, at that meeting can then talk about some of the obstacles that they're facing. For instance, during the pandemic, the, some of the businesses were talking about how hard how hard it was to actually find qualified employees. And some of the solutions that they were coming up with were having large starting bonuses. And they also basically learned that they needed to increase the wage for some of their entry-level jobs. Another benefit for this meeting is the fact that the businesses are able to get updates from the city, the school district, their state legislatures, et cetera. And we get feedback from them on policies that we're thinking about, et cetera, and they can let us know how that's going to affect them. I've attended many chamber luncheons where I've had the privilege of sitting at a table for lunch and learning about the employees in our area and, and their roles and their jobs. I've attended many ribbon cuttings, et cetera, that at this point seem to be occurring weekly. And it's always educational to learn about what a new business is going to offer to our community. And one of my favorite things to learn is what brought them here? What made them come to Lakeville? And most of them will state that it's, has to do with the quality of our staff helping them to come and build a business here. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Joshua?
Well, first of all, we have an incredibly strong business community that is supported by an amazing chamber. As a council member, I've taken every opportunity to build those relationships with our business community by taking advantage of groundbreakings, ribbon cuttings, chamber membership anniversaries. Those are the relationships that provide me with the perspective of what our needs, demands, and, and growth that we have in the city and, and what we, what we need as part of that ecosystem in the, in the city of Lakeville. Much of my work on the council has been prioritizing those needs of that ecosystem, which requires adequate housing diversity, a skilled workforce, as well as processes and resources that encourage new businesses to choose Lakeville. More specifically, supporting the visitors bureau, Lakeville Works, providing pandemic relief to businesses and approving new businesses to Lakeville are all ways that I have personally been a part of the business community. But in addition to that, I always make it a priority to attend workshops like the Manufacturers Workforce Panel to ensure that I stay abreast of the upcoming trends and concerns in our community. So while I do not own a business, I did previously work as a, on the catering team at Crystal Lake Golf Course. And I am a fierce promoter of our local businesses to my family, friends, and coworkers, to their dismay probably. But every day I can, I, I tell them that they need to dine and shop here in Lakeville. So, thank you.
All right, we definitely appreciate people promoting our businesses here. Not that that's an endorsement of any, only the businesses. Abdi?
Yes, first of all, I want to put this out. I am proud shopper of our community members. And so my dollars don't go outside Lakeville. My grocery is done in Lakeville, my dry cleaning done in Lakeville. So going back to the question, it's a great community. The relationship that I have, in my professional level, I have providers who live in Lakeville that I hire, that come to me and I, I work with. The relationship I have is the one I just said, using the services that our great community business that we have. I provide consulting and services and other strategic planning with them. I dream about having a business in Lakeville. My wife and I dreaming to open a Lakeville community store. It is, it is in the early dream stage. It may come down to the road before our retirements. So, so that is that. But other than that, I don't have any membership with the chamber or any specific relationship with the comrades. But I am a Lakeville member. My family members work in the community. I shop in the community. We have relationship with the community. And that's the relationship that I have, which I am looking forward to in the future that our relationship will grow stronger and we'll build a Lakeville, stronger Lakeville together.
All right, thank you. Just making a joke, we have one that's promoting, one that's shopping at them. And Sham, I think you own one, so you're up next.
It just, I agree with everybody says something about this situation because it's all right. And like I says, as a chef in a restaurant in Lakeville, I make my money here in Lakeville, has been my money here in Lakeville. I shop in Lakeville. So this is how you make, like, like the philosophy is, as a, as a city council member, you know, to, to, to work and live in Lakeville. So I think everybody said the right decision tonight, so I'm so grateful. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Richard?
I operate a small business in Lakeville, and I am a Chamber of Commerce member. My business is in magazine publishing. I have a podcast and also a lot of e-commerce. Although my business has a national focus, I still rely on many other small businesses to support my business. Like most business owners, I outsource what I can. Our Chamber of Commerce is an integral part of the Lakeville community, has been a great place to network, to meet other business owners, and gain advice. I value the many friends I have made through the chamber. I've also had the chance to learn more about Lakeville business, attending their breakfast, lunch, and, and ribbon cuttings. I can't deny that the local business community is also a fun social network with many fun events sponsored by the chamber and other businesses. Case in point, we just had the Rocktoberfest this last Friday, and it was a lot of fun. That was sponsored by the chamber. I'm also a member of Lakeville Rotary Club, the community group I am most active in. Rotary participation brings me in contact with many other small, owners of small businesses and others who work for larger local businesses. Through these connections over the years, I learned the challenges that businesses face here and how the local community and government can work together as partners with the business community. I consider myself a pro-business candidate. I believe that we cannot have a thriving pro-family Lakeville without a thriving business community. This is also the best way to keep our taxes and our annual tax levy low while generating the revenue to fund the improvements that we need to keep Lakeville the high-quality city that it is. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We are on to our fifth question, so this time I believe we start with Joshua. And this is a question regarding staff support. How will you support city staff in their efforts to market Lakeville as a business-friendly destination to potential new and relocating businesses? Joshua?
Just a moment. All right, thank you for your patience. So first, I want to recognize the fact that we have an incredible staff here in Lakeville. We have many award-winning teams and individuals that, that are within our ranks that have worked diligently to uphold the vision and direction of city council while providing top-notch service to our residents and businesses. Our reputation is a business-friendly city. And that hinges on a few factors, but one of the most important ones is the accessibility and ease of working with city staff. And I can't tell you how many times a business has come to city council to tell us how easy it was to work with the city. Ultimately, though, one of the best ways we can support such a high-performing team is to maintain our role as a board of directors, to point out potential pitfalls, concerns, to oversee the overall vision and direction, but not to micromanage the day-to-day operations of what's going on in city hall and out in, in the other functions of the, of the city staff. So that's how I believe you continue to build trust within your team and motivate them to do their best work.
All right, I appreciate it. Abdi?
Thank you. So in, in last nine years, I have been sitting on an, on a chair hiding, interviewing, self-making selectionists. But it looks like into this chair that it will look like, kind of like oversee, support, consult, and provide collaboration with others, such as human resource team, city administrators, directors. And the question of how do we interact business-friendly, you know, promoting that? It is a question that I think we need, not only Lakeville, we have the, that capacity, but also reach out help with the county officials. Because sometimes a big company, organization might ask a huge tax break, which the very small budget that City of Lakeville has, even more than that. So how are you gonna collaborate with those things? So who do we turn for help? Who do we ask for help? State level, county level, federal level? So those are the things that we need to bring on the table. Those are the question we need to ask ourselves. And that is why I'm good at it. I have been developing and building teams, hiding, putting, working at board of directors, helping and creating budgets and working with our budgets and providing oversight. I work with the directors, board of directors. And that is something I believe I have an experience, and I have done that for the last nine years. It is something that I do daily, and it's my professional level, writing grants. All those are the things that I think we need to look for support. Any partnership we can create, whether developers, private and nonprofit organizations. So I believe we can attain, recruit with the help of others and partnerships. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. Sham?
I'm gonna make it very short. To support city staff and their effort to market Lakeville as a business-friendly decision is all about attitude. A good attitude bring businesses, which I think most of the people working in Lakeville city have the good attitude. And you know, if beat you with smile, you meet you with, with, with give you a nice hope to make you, you know, attracted to, to do something for the city and stuff like that. And this is how you maintain good relation with the city staff and residents and the business owners to keep going, to get the city going. Good attitude. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Richard?
The most important first step for me was to have a clear assessment from key city staff, such as the Economic Development Commission, EDC, and planning on what support they need for effective marketing to new and relocating businesses. I won't make assumptions. Ensure that these marketing resources are included into the annual budget. And, you know, in the big scheme of a large city budget like Lakeville, the resources needed for business marketing are a very, very small part of the financial pie. For example, the EDC distributes the Lakeville Thrive Newsletter to highlight new business development. There's also the chamber's Lakeville Works to better communicate employee needs. I will be supportive of these and other forms of communication and marketing to raise reput-, Lakeville's reputation with new businesses. For a larger business interested in Lakeville, I will be open-minded to rezoning and other financial incentives that the business might require and would assist as a city leader in communicating with those businesses as requested. The City of Lakeville has, also has key partners who assist with communication to business, such as the Chamber of Commerce Planning Commission and Downtown Business Association. I would look at any options to strengthen this integration to make their communications more effective. Future development also has a connection with keeping the city business friendly and highlights the importance of strategic development. For example, more affordable housing for workers, key infrastructure improvements, and development clusters of industrial or retail centers make Lakeville more business-friendly. This emphasizes the importance of having a long-term strategic focus on development and how this opens up more opportunities to market Lakeville as a business-friendly destination. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Michelle?
Thank you. Our communications and economic development departments, I think, are doing a great job promoting Lakeville is a great place to live and work, to start your business here or to relocate here. On our website, when you look on the economic development tab and you look at the heading Development Toolbox, it gives, it outlines some opportunities such as tax increment financing, the Minnesota Job Creation Fund, the Minnesota Investment Fund, and then the Open to Business Program that's in conjunction with Dakota County. These are great resources for businesses that are thinking about coming here. The other thing that I think is wonderful is that it's a two-page, you know, front and back, well, actually, it's just like a one-page, but front and back handout that outlines some of the data about our city and the fact that we have 63% of our population that is of working age. And it includes data on building permits that have been issued, industrial space that's under construction, and then, you know, land that's available for a, a business to purchase and, and build new. Our website, this is a, the interactive development map is something that I would highly suggest even to our residents. But for businesses, it lets them know, you know, where all the businesses are that are coming in, what developments are taking place. But for our residents, when you're driving by someplace and you're like, oh, what are they building there? Go on our website, look at the interactive develop map, and that will answer your question. So I think, overall, I think that both departments do a great job promoting Lakeville. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We've got some time, so if we're good, we're, got, got at least one more question here for you. I think we're starting with Abdi this time. Stuck to my hand, so this must be the right one. This is regarding business retention. How would you characterize the business climate in Lakeville? What do you feel should be done, if anything, to attract and retain business in Lakeville? All right, Abdi?
Retention and attracting the, so these sentences, I think Lakeville has a potential when it comes to attractive businesses, whether it's a large corporation or a small business. What we need to do is that, do we have the capacity to hold what it takes to support these businesses? I have seen organizations that, for example, we order small permits and contractors will take 30 days around. So what is the capacity of City of Lakeville for turnaround to support organizations? If they're small contractors are getting that time. So we need to look back and see the city capacity. We need to create a department, not the comrades and, and the support of that, but department that is set up to support and come up intensive is to attract small businesses as well as a large business. And what would that look like? Do we have the money to support small businesses and to give them a tax breaks? And do we have a land to donate? Do we have, what are those other questions? Do we have the residents or if we have to support that? So all those are the questions. And it goes back to the question of what, how can we provide the tools and services in a timely manner? So I believe retention and planning can be done with the city administrators, with the oversight of city councils, with the support, collaboration, and consultation. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Sham?
To attract and retain businesses, especially small businesses in Lakeville, taxes. We need to lower taxes, especially- need to lower taxes, especially robbery taxes. 10 years ago, like the bug board used to be like $3,000 robbery tax, now it would be $9,000 robbery tax, jump high. And this is, is, it goes to any other business, the same thing. You need to lower the cost of the, I don't know why, why is always voting, just raise the robbery tax, raise the robbery tax. It's going like nuts. And in the meantime, you need to, to, to find cheap housing for the workers to come to Lakeville and maintain, live in Lakeville, so we can have a workforce to help open this business and keep it going. Because for last few months, there is no, everywhere I go, I see a sign, "Help Wanted." Anywhere you go, you see a sign, "Help Wanted", because we didn't have no workforce in Lakeville. And this is going to affect the small businesses too. So, the order to, to, to keep the businesses open, like I say, is cheap housing. And the second option is to keep it going. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. Richard?
As someone who feels connected to the business community and operates a local business, I think the business climate in Lakeville is good. The city and Chamber of Commerce communicate effectively the message, "Lakeville is open for business." Lakeville has been blessed with the assets that attract new businesses. This includes location on an interstate highway and close to an international airport and large metro area. We have a rail line, major road arteries, a mid-sized airport, an industrial park, and a great, most of all, a great workforce within Lakeville. So, when attracting new business to us, to our city, as the old saying goes, "Don't mess up a good thing." To exploit these competitive advantages and bring in the highest quality new businesses, I will build upon the strong relationship between the Chamber of Commerce and key city staff, such as the Economic Development Center. For new businesses entered, interested in locating to Lakeville, we can be flexible with special needs they might have, such as with infrastructure. To keep Lakeville an attractive location for larger industrial businesses, I still think, again, there's a strategic connection to improving downtown Lakeville as a cultural and entertainment destination to make that more attractive for them. For keeping businesses in Lakeville that might be relocating to expand, we need good human intelligence on the ground to pick up early on issues that could drive a business to relocate. City officials to then take the lead to, to negotiate with that business. For smaller retail businesses that have challenges keeping their doors open, we can be flexible with fees to help them stay viable. Finally, we can leverage the partnerships with local colleges. Be aware of the changing skills that local businesses need and align those skills with colleges such as Dakota County Technical College. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. Michelle?
Thanks. So, I decided to give a, a rating and what the business climate is, and, and I agree, it's good. But currently, I would probably give it a seven out of 10, only because of the challenges that our businesses are having to face at this time. While we've had some, some strong growth over the last couple of years, it seems to be slowing down. And some of those factors that are out of control, you know, the city doesn't have control over this, are supply chain issues. So, people are, I mean, they're not being able to get building materials to be able to build. They're having to forecast out way out whether or not to build. And lately, in the last couple of months, we have seen interest rates go up time and time again. And this is going to have a detrimental effect on our business community. I know that we've been talking about jobs and how to get new employees. However, I'm not trying to be a W. Downer here, but because of these interest rates, the companies are going to start slowing down in hiring, and they are not going to want to, how do I want to say? They're going to want to be very conservative in how they move forward and, and doing their business. You know, I'm concerned that, that we're heading toward a recession. So, as city council members, we need to really keep an eye on this trend and make choices here in the next couple of years to be able to help out our business community. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Joshua?
Well, view a recording of our most recent State of the City, and you will find easy evidence to the fact that we have no problem attracting businesses and retaining businesses to expand here in Lakeville. So, to, the, the long and short of it is that we're already doing that. I think there is an opportunity, though, to figure out a way to help diversify the businesses that are coming into Lakeville. Look at some research regarding bringing in more minority and women-owned businesses, and it not only makes economic sense, but it'll help meet some of the needs that we have as our, our community population diversifies as well. So, do think there is financial incentive to do that, but I also believe that it will bring some sense of belonging for folks who are, are looking for different cultural menus, shops, stores, that, that'll bring that sense of comfort. And so, it would be great to start a dialogue about how we can attract those businesses to our city. But, again, we are a very healthy business community. We're already attracting folks to, to build and expand here. So, we're doing something right. And so, I think the initiative I just talked about would just be taking it to the next level.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate that. All right. This one's going to be a short one. This is the moderator's choice here. We're starting with Sham. I don't expect two-minute answers on this. Please, if it were your last meal on earth, give me your lineup. I, I'm personally going to be a steak medium rare with potato with trimmings and a nice glass of red wine. But I want to hear from each of you. Sham?
Can you repeat again your questions?
The la, the, your last meal on earth tomorrow, done. Tell me, what would be your meal?
Oh, I like Italian baster with mussels and red sauce. And this is my best meal.
I'm with, I feel you. Richard?
Lobster and Mick Golden Light.
Great in another way. Michelle?
Well, obviously, I like to eat. You know, I think one of my favorite foods is salmon. So, I would probably go with a Cajun salmon and some broccoli. And I don't drink, but that would, and probably, I'd have to probably go to one of our local restaurants that makes this most fantastic coffee, espresso coffee. And...
Give a shout out.
Okay.
Maybe you're falling just in New York.
A better, I, I'm sorry, but it's a better half restaurant. They make, they just make a fantastic, I, there's a term for it, and I don't remember what the actual term is, but I always order it, and it's a very expensive little cup of coffee, but it makes, puts a smile on my face.
Amen. I'm with you. Joshua?
I'd choose cinnamon roll, French toast, with a side of crispy buttery hash browns and cheesy scrambled eggs.
Welcome to the bug boards.
Fantastic. Abdi?
This is where the American problem comes and kicked it in. So, do we have to be a kosher, halal, and non-halal? So, what, what dish are we talking about? So, when we create this kind of question, it puts us apart. So, this guy moved to Italy, and this guy moved in American and French, and that, so, who are we going to represent, in Lakeville or around the globe then? That's the question I need to answer for it before I give it to my answer.
It, it is what you would like.
What I would like?
And, and, and with the kosher, the kosher or halal idea, it's your last meal, so you better choose properly.
Surely, I, I, not offensive to my wife, and she's a great cook, and she's sitting here, but I will, I will go with a salmon dish.
All right. Fantastic.
Salmon dish will never go wrong. So, anything on the side, so.
All right. Fantastic. Well, thank you all. That brings us to the end of the question round. Appreciate all your responses. Appreciate all your patience with me and everything else here tonight. So, we're going to start off with Richard, and we're going to give your, this is your opportunity to do your closing statement of 90 seconds.
Thank you. I wanted to thank the Chamber of Commerce for hosting tonight's forum, and thank you citizens for tuning in. I also want to extend best wishes to my fellow candidates. I think that you all have the best interests of Lakeville at heart. To recap my top priorities, I will focus on achieving quality and sustainable growth and work to keep Lakeville business friendly, family-friendly, smartly governed, and safe. I support a local government that is accountable, transparent, and tolerant. Everyone's voice should be heard. I hope that I have communicated common sense positions on the issues we have discussed this evening. I can assure you that I don't have all the answers, but I do know how to start asking the right questions. I can also assure you that I have no agendas from any special interests and that I will govern in a manner that is nonpartisan, non-polarizing, and independent. If fortunate enough to be granted the privilege to serve on city council, I will spend the time needed to get up to speed and apply my judgment without prejudice. If you like what I stand for, appreciate yard signs, and you can find, sign up for those online and get more information on the campaign at votrichardhenderson.com. And so, I will see you out door knocking on the campaign trail, riding on my new latest technology stand-up electric scooter. So, who says you can't teach an old dog new tricks? Thank you, and I ask for the privilege of your vote.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. Michelle?
Well, I would like to also thank the chamber for hosting this event. It's a great resource for the citizens of our community to get to know each of these candidates and the skill sets that you each bring to the table, so that they can make an informed vote. As a council member, I will probably bring a different perspective to the table. As a small birth, business person, I understand how policies can in fact, impact and affect our local businesses. As a former school board member, I understand the relationship between our building and what it's going to do to the school district, et cetera, or how some of our policies could actually affect our school districts. My philosophy on public service, first and foremost, means serving the public and not myself. I believe in open communication. I'm always willing to meet and talk with residents on their issues, but mostly, I believe in listening and hearing what it is that you have as an idea and your perspective. I will ask the hard questions. I will listen to both sides of an issue, but I am not a rubber stamp council member. Residents care deeply about our city's well-being, and I will work hard to have your voice heard. So, please consider voting for me on November 8. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. Joshua?
Well, when I moved here and started as a police reserve, I certainly didn't think I'd be sitting in a council member seat. But when you're driving at 2:00 AM in the, around Lakeville, you start to get a sense of responsibility and ownership to step up to the plate and serve your community. If elected to a second term, my priorities are going to be safety and well-being, sustainable growth, and a sense of community. And through my time on city council, there are certain, there have certainly been times where people did not necessarily agree with my opinion or stance. But at the end of the day, what the important part is, and the reputation that I have attained over this time, is that I listen, I care, and I take it into consideration with a deep respect for their perspective. We all are what make this a diverse, enriching place to live, work, and play. And there, there is no one perspective that overrides the other. I'm seeking reelection because I believe in Lakeville. I believe that there are many wonderful opportunities here, and I want the future residents and business owners to experience that sense of community that I feel. So, thank you for your time. Appreciate the chamber for putting this on.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. Abdi?
Yeah. Thank you for invitation to be part of this forum tonight. I appreciate it, and I am glad to be part of this, this forum with the college candidates. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. I understand the need and the wants of residents and taxpayers. I will be a strong advocate for all Lakeville resident taxpayers that needs to be, and that's, that needs to be heard in the city hall. If I get elected, I will make sure that the needs and wants of all resident and taxpayers to be heard and to be responded in timely manner. Throughout my extensive experience in the community services and administration, executive decision-making levels, I believe I have what it takes to help and guide the city hall from the crisis to a positive resolution area. As an effective leader has a vision, mission, purpose, and a theory that greater than day-to-day activity, a leader plays a vital role in influencing the institutional status. A leader must recognize and address the need and concern within this, within the community. I have, I have the educational background, executive, executive office experience, and a great deal of experience with the diverse population. I have worked with the community partners, both private and nonprofit organizations. I have created, managed a five billion plus budget. I have, I've known and balanced and worked with line by line. I hope to earn your vote. I'm Abdi Abdul, and thanks for your support.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Sham?
Once again, thanks Chamber of Commerce for hosting this event tonight. If I get voted in, I will make sure to discuss with my colleagues, to the managers and rental buildings owners, to not ask people for base stops no more to rent apartment or house, because this is, we're going to lose the workforce. We need attractive workforce. We need them to come to work and to pay the rent and live like everybody else. To control, like I said before, if you're going to rent one apartment for $1,350, one bedroom, so you need to make like at least $40 an hour to pay that, and which wouldn't have $40 an hour in Lakeville, we needed to do that. So, the secondly, if I get voted in, I make sure we have a low robbery tax. We're going to drop it a little bit, because our seniors living in housing apartments, pension is not high enough to make a living the rest of the month after they pay the rent. This is for our seniors. The second thing and the last thing, if I got voted in, I work my heart off to build a swimming pool in our parks, to be able to enjoy it after a tough day, our work and families, and also bring revenue to the city. I will thank everybody, and you could go Sham for citycouncil.com to vote Sham. Thank you.
All right. Fantastic. Thank you. On behalf of the businesses and residents of Lakeville and the Lakeville Chamber of Commerce, I got to, again, thank everyone for running. I worked with candidates many times, gone out and beat doors, and I know how much work goes into this for you guys. And I really do appreciate everyone that goes and puts their name out there. It's very hard work to do, and I think we all, all should give a round of applause to them. All right. As a quick reminder, Lakeville Chamber is hosting three candidate forums this year. This one, the one for school board, and also a joint forum for the Senate District 57 and House Districts 57A and B. Candidate forums are being conducted and broadcast live with read broadcasts on LGTV Channel 180 on Charter. Channel 180 on Charter and on the city of Lakeville and Lakeville Chamber's YouTube channels. You may contact the chamber at 952-469-2020 for the link. Just as a reminder, the Lakeville Chamber has not and will not endorse any candidates in any election this year. But on behalf of the Lakeville Chamber of Commerce, I want to thank you all for watching and please remember to vote on November 8th. Thank you all very much. Good night.
Thank you.